Yeah, we are. Before we start, just a reminder that there are cookies over there, coffee and water, and it's for anyone in the audience that would like to partake. Bailey James donated cookies, and Sherry is our council baker, so she brought cupcakes as well. The microphone is a little louder than usual.
It was, it was nice, actually.
Yeah, what the microphone? Okay. And so we're right at seven, we'll get started. We'll call the meeting to order. If we can, all rise, please, and Mr. Morse is going to lead us in prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the ability and the luxury and pleasure of joining here tonight. I thank you for the folks who are here, the citizens, and I thank you for the administration of Walton. I thank you for the many blessings that we have received this year. And I thank you, Lord, for Christmas on me, all the hard work that went on to that, and what a great event that was, and that everybody had to go behind. I thank you for the season we can celebrate, the birth of your solemn organization which is God. And I pray this meeting will all go well, and everybody will be generally happy, and gain a bunch of information. And I thank you all for all these things that made us know. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Rebecca, if we can, get a roll call, please.
Rose Beach.
Here.
Amy Long.
Here.
Barb Barrow.
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell.
Here.
Dan Martin.
Here.
Matt Brown.
Thank you. And a few announcements. December 24th and 25th, City Hall will be closed in observance of the holidays. January 1st, City Hall will be closed for the holiday. January 7th, there's a caucus meeting, 6:30, Council Chambers at City Hall. January the 14th will be our council meeting here at 7:00 PM in the senior center. And if we can get an approval of the agenda, please.
Motion. Second.
Rose Beach.
Yes.
Amy Long.
Yes.
Barb Barrow.
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell.
Here.
Dan Martin.
Yes.
Matt Brown.
Moving right along, approval of the minutes. It would be the November 12th council meeting, as well as the December 3rd caucus and special council meeting.
I make motion.
Second.
You approve both of them?
Together.
Okay.
Rose Beach.
Yes.
Amy Long.
Yes.
Barb Barrow.
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell.
Yes.
Dan Martin.
Yes.
Matt Brown.
Thank you. And so for the first order of business tonight, we're going to have the swearing in of our newly elected council, and our new city clerk, as well as the mayor's spot. Mr. Duncan, do you want to swear something as a group, or how do you want to do this?
Yeah, we'll do a group.
Okay, very well. So, for those who are unaware, Barb, this is her last council meeting with us. She's been an amazing asset to the city, to the people. She's a hard worker. We are going to miss Barb. But Barb promises us that she will remain involved, and I know she will. So Barb, just thank you for your service. Taking Barb's place is Caleb Flagey. He will be our newest councilperson and joining in January, January 1st. So Caleb, if you'd like to come and stand with us as we take this oath.
All right. Do you want to do it like that, Mayor, or would you rather do it separately?
How would you like to do it, sir? I figure if we all do it together, yeah, it would be best. You want to go to the open area, or you just want us to stand here?
Wherever you want to be.
Okay. Caleb, you want to fall in?
Get over here so I can see you all.
Okay, very well.
We could put him down in here with us.
When will you have to state our name? Do you just want us to go through?
Right. What I'm going to do is say, state your name, then I'll read the oath to you, and then you say I do or I don't. And the reason I wanted to get out here and keep an eye on all of you is to make sure you're not crossing your fingers or toes or anything like that. This is really important. And I probably know this by heart, but I'm going to read it to make sure I don't miss any of it, because it's so important.
Absolutely.
So if you would, raise your right hand, please. State your name.
Rebecca.
You do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue to be a citizen thereof, that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of Mayor, Council, City Clerk of the City of Walton according to law. Here's the fun part. And I do further solemnly swear and affirm that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I being a citizen of this state have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons. Notice I'm checking to make sure you're not crossing your fingers. Nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offended, offending so help me God. You do or you don't?
I do.
You do? All right. Remember, it's a two-year sentence.
Congratulations all.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Barb. Okay, so up next, we'll have citizens' comments. Thank you first and foremost for everyone being here tonight. Does anyone have anything? Yes, ma'am.
I think that Christmas on my way off really is a success this year, and I want to go say thank you to everyone for that.
Thank you, and we appreciate you coming to sing as well. We had great volunteers, and our city workers did an amazing job. I think it was one of the best, so. Are there any other citizen comments? Moving on with business, we have Sheriff's Department, Major Bill Mark.
Merry Christmas to y'all.
Good evening.
Great to see such a nice crowd here. I guess unlike me, everybody else is done with their shopping. Council's got a copy of my report, and I think some of them are back on the table. But here's my report on Sheriff's Department activity for and in the City of Walton for the month of November 2024. There were a total of 914 law enforcement events that the Sheriff's Department logged in the city. Some of those categories include 2911 hangups. Deputies responded to 18 alarms. We handled two attempts to locate, two animal complaints. Deputies investigated plenty of auto accidents. That's up a little bit from October, so I guess it's getting to be winter time. We logged 14 business checks, attempted 32 so-called criminal offenses, conducted two criminal mischief investigations, and handled nine domestic disputes, six complaints of intoxicated persons, three motion for gracees, seven juvenile trouble calls, four motorist assists. We responded to three overdoses, three requests for information. Deputies logged 449 spot checks, 13 suspicious activity reports. Deputies investigated four thefts. They logged 26 traffic complaints in the city and conducted 43 traffic stops. Deputies logged 35 vacation checks. And I'd like to kind of take a, kind of give a little PSA on vacation checks. Anybody in the county, it is welcome to have their home checked by the sheriff's office, whether they're going to be given away on vacation or on business or whatever. All you have to do is call our office or call the dispatch center, and we actually get out and physically check every door and window on that. So it's not just a dry line. But so all you have to do is call and request that service. We're happy to do it for you. There was 12 vehicle complaints. We unlocked 11 cars, handled eight one-person calls, and all told deputies issued 32 citations and made five arrests. Is there any questions I can handle from the council or from the audience?
What kind of wanted person?
Basically, that can be either citizen-generated or generated by a deputy, but that means we're going to an address to look for someone, one who has a warrant. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas to you.
Chief, he called today, and unfortunately, he wasn't going to be able to make it. Did he forward his report? Okay, very well. And Cardinal Engineering, Mr. Matt Bogan.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I don't have a whole lot to report on this month. Just getting into the end of the year, most of the construction dropped off, and we're starting to wind down, planning for next year. Our road projects, we had Precision Concrete Cutting come back into town to do some more sidewalk repairs. We were happy with the work they did last time, so we had another round. They did Beddinger Pine Top, and then they addressed some complaints that were reported in front of Bailey James and Library. The total cost of that was $15,305. We don't have another round of sidewalk repairs proposed at this time, but Dirt Works, the contractor that's been doing our concrete panel replacement in the fall, has mentioned that that was a service, and they were considering adding to their bar, and that could be another opportunity for us to use that, because Precision is located out of, what was it? So we're down in central Kentucky. So, you know, we do have some upfront costs on mobilization, or I guess having a local contractor would probably be more costly back to forth. So I will love to talk to them early next year and see if that's a more attractive option for us. And then at caucus, we discussed the manhole adjustments that need to be done on Main Street. Just for the citizens' information, that's something, the state's going to be resurfacing Main Street in spring, and just they said that the city needs to adjust some of the manholes in the roadway, so they're going to be even with the new surface. So initially, we thought that the cost of that was going to be $30,000. For the quote, it was $1,000 per manhole. After looking closer at it, they found that only 14 of the manholes would need adjustments, so we're down to 14,000 on that. We got our encouragement permit from the state, pretty much just whenever their plan is already shut down for the fall, but they'll probably start on that late winter, early spring in advance of the resurfacing. But as soon as I get word of their schedule, I'll let you guys know, so we can put out notice on social media or public. On our projects at the Owens Park property, like I said, Rigler's done for the season. Weather started getting too cold for them before they could do the final surface on the multi-use path. They did do some temporary restoration and just get the site cleaned up for the winter, so I don't see any issues with holding this soft opening for the park and letting the public come and see what we've been doing out there for the last few years. And then on our wastewater treatment expansion, we've, you know, been reaching out to property owners that have favorable properties for what we need for a new facility. We are, we're going to be meeting with them hopefully in the next few weeks to discuss if any of those would be feasible for us. And then the developer that's building up the last two lots in Logistics Park 75, so the Allen Richard Bank Highway, they were one of the properties who's been put on hold because of the moratorium. So they, through their engineer, have reached out to us and asked if there's anything that they can do to help facilitate our projects to hopefully get that moving along faster so that the city can get what we need, and they can get the moratorium lifted so they can move ahead with their facility. So again, haven't met with anybody yet, or hopefully get something going soon, and we'll see if any of those pan out. Also, you know, as a, you know, discussing an interim solution, we are looking at adding a new holding tank at the existing plant on Stevenson Mill. Cardinals going to go out there and stake the property lines so that we can see the extents kind of back up on the hillside. That's probably where the new tank will go, just need to kind of know where the limits are so we know where to, you know, where to stay. And then I'll get with Monarch, and we'll start getting some firmer cost estimates for all that put together so that we can get with KLC and talk about funding opportunities. Are there any council comments or questions?
I just have one question about the water issue at the end of Mary Grubbs.
Yeah.
Are we able to progress in any way, or is there any new developments, or?
Oh, on Mariko. I've been looking at it. I want to get, we have some information already where we previously surveyed the existing storms, or I think I mentioned last month, there's five total outlets that dump into that low point. I don't know that we can consolidate all of those into one system, but we could probably do probably two systems, like one up towards Mariko and then another one down towards Mary Grubbs. And, you know, at least not hit all that water discharge right into that low point. You know, take some of that and pipe it downstream so that it's not all just collecting there. I do, I will need to get some more survey information on the land, just to know the topography of it, so I can, you know, help do more detailed design on it, or just kind of sketch on a map. So I'll work it on that through the winter so that, you know, in springtime, we can get the contractor back out there and do it right.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Bogan?
Yeah. What would their ways of helping look like? What would some of the ways that, you know, the, with just the park?
If they can, you know, if they can help with money, or, you know, contributing towards, you know, the infrastructure we need, if there's, you know, they can help us with property, at least the engineer that's representing them is the one that designed the whole development. They've got in contact with the Knox family, who has, who owns that detention parcel that's back there, and might be able to get us in on, you know, acquiring all or part of that property for our new plant. I just need to make some calls and get some meetings and set up. Yeah, at this point, we're going to talk to anybody who wants to help. Or pursue us.
Another thing, the additional holding tank, once funds hit, about how long will that take? I mean, far as any crazy things, you know?
To construct it?
Yeah.
Um, we talked about that a little bit yesterday at the KLC meeting. I would say four to six months. The biggest unknown right now is going to be the excavation. You know, we're going to be up on top of the hill. You know, it's going to be a matter of, you know, are we going to, if the bedrock is deep enough, you know, we can excavate down into the, you know, into the hillside and put it in there. If the bedrock is shallow, of course, that's going to drive up our excavation cost by a lot, you know, with blasting or anything like that. So probably more of it would be above ground. But I don't have enough to get by yet. We need to get a geotechnological engineer out there to do some ground testing for the lower end of the company.
And the great news, if we're able to go that route, then the blueprints that were used previously, it's just going to be carbon copy, so.
Yeah. Yeah, the tank itself and the, you know, associated equipment is going to be pretty much copy paste from what's down at the bottom of the hill. You know, just the grading is going to be slightly different because we're, you know, we're up on the hill. And then we'll probably need some sort of pumping system to get up there, since we're not left with the rest of the site. Yeah, a lot of it is pretty fully replaced from the existing facility.
Dan, did you have something? No, we're good. Okay.
What was that adding to the council? Jerry, do you remember what the volume on that was?
Beautiful. Good. Yeah. Is it 200,000 gallons?
Is it not essentially one-third of, we have three currently?
Mm-hmm.
So?
They're not all the same size.
Is that right? Okay.
So, yeah, I think around 200,000 gallons.
So to your point, John, we know that this is an immediate fix, right, to really get us out of hot water. But we also know that five to 10 years out, there's going to have to be a new sewer plant. So this will fix us for now, and then we have to really search on the funding and hopefully grant opportunities as we've continued to look. But it will serve an immediate need, and it's not a Band-Aid fix, because it's something that we can use in the future as well.
Your estimated cost of addition?
Um, right now, we're saying approximately about $5 million.
Grants?
Before, that's for the expansion, the new plant, it's about $4 million.
Is there, is it on the, the addition, is there grants?
No, we've, currently, there's not. And Mr. Bogan, you can add to it, but in our search for grants, unfortunately, we've hit a wall and have been told that we're too rich of a community, right? So we don't qualify for a lot of the money that's out there, but we're not going to be discouraged by that. We're going to continue to look. And hopefully, as we move forward, and it's the decision of council to move forward with the city manager, that that potentially would be a responsibility of the city manager as well, that has grant writing experience or the ability to help us secure funds, which essentially could pay for that position, right? But we're not giving up on that search. It's just we've not been successful in that search.
Yeah, you know, as Mayor Courtney said, the ones that we've inquired about so far, the city was too wealthy to qualify for it. Bobby McDonald had found a couple other grants online, and at least at a quick glance, it looked like we would qualify. I kind of need to dig into the legalities of it and see if there's any, you know, what all of the criteria for qualification are. We'd be too rich for those as well, but we're not getting any statements up there. And, you know, if not, then, you know, KLC's going to work with us on the bombing.
What does that look like on payment per bomb? What would they say, $2 million?
Yeah, they couldn't give us, they had factored in all of the projects, right? So they had factored between 20 and 30, and this first stage would only be, I say only, but about 10 million, because that would be the pump station, as well as the new sewer basin, but right around that.
$660,000 for the first 10 million.
What's that?
$660,000 a month for the first stage.
A month or a year?
A year. A year, yeah. For the first stage.
For the first stage. And then we could, with, we just had a two-hour meeting with KLC yesterday, and they told us that the bomb would be for eight years set, right? And then we could look to refinance. But again, that would just be the first stage of the pump station, as well as the first sewer basin. So we definitely are going to continue to look at opportunities for future funding.
Yeah, they need us to be fairly confident with our numbers, so they said that we can do, you know, two issuances, you know, based on the phasing of it. So, you know, when we get, you know, a solid set of design plans on the lift station and the expansion, you know, basically bid prices, do the first round, and then when we, you know, as we get, you know, design on the new treatment plant, do the second issuance. But, yeah, it was, you know, pretty close than, rather than just doing preliminary numbers, so we don't baron for underestimating.
So Mr. Bogan's going to work hard on the sewer piece to see what that new basin would be, and Jerry's got a contact with an engineer who has been working on the lift station. And last year, Jerry corrected me if I'm wrong, the quote was somewhere around $5 million. And so it was one year, right? That could be seven. So, but Jerry's going to follow up with them. And that already has essentially a blueprint, too. So we are forward motion. We do have the wheels going, and just kudos to council folk who, and Mr. Bogan, Jerry, who just continue to propel us forward, because it was an immediate need years ago, right? And so we're moving forward. That's a win. Anything else for Mr. Bogan?
Is there any additional, I think it's going to be about 200,000 gallons?
Uh, yeah, I think it's approximately.
And there's three existing right now?
Yes.
What's the total capacity of the existing?
Uh, 800,000. The full capacity of the existing plant, 800,000 gallons of it? 750, 750,000 gallons of it.
Yes, sir.
I have a question on the road side of things. Is there any plans to add turn lanes off of Mary Grubbs to Beatrice Avenue and School Road, like that was recently done to the Dunkin' and Skyline?
Uh, not currently. So the turn lanes that were extended for the Dunkin' and Skyline were a requirement that the state put on the developer to?
The right turn lanes. I know they'll look to, like, a right turn lane on Beatrice Avenue.
Uh, right. No, we don't have any plans currently to add turn lanes on Beatrice, or for Beatrice.
Okay. And then also, are there any plans to add, like, wheel stops or followers for pedestrians along Mary Grubbs Highway, where there is no sidewalk sections?
Uh, there are not, and that is something that the state would not permit us to do.
What's that?
The, so Mary Grubbs is a state route, so any improvements that we would do on Mary Grubbs would have to be cleared by them, and that's not something that's allowed to their policy because it is a crash hazard. So, you know, if we were to add any sidewalks to connect the areas that don't currently have it, they would just want it setback from the road. And I guess if it, if there was a hazard, it would probably be addressed with guardrails, but it's not something we would explore in the interior.
I just see on my keys back and forth, a lot of times, drivers will go into the, onto the right side to make the right turn faster, and people will be walking there because there's no options. So I know technically it can't be a sidewalk, but just putting followers up even if they're the plastic reflective ones, I think that would be something.
Those would be, those would be possible. You know, like I said, obviously, the state gets the final say on all that. We have not asked them to consider it yet. If there's, you know, if council has, you know, some support for that, that's definitely something we can explore.
Yeah. Not the most aesthetic, but for the time being, it's better than nothing.
You're referring to heading west on Mary Grubbs and turning the right on Beatrice?
I'm just, both sides, especially people walking from both sides, especially because of the very, the main street turn, you do have to cause four lanes of traffic. So if someone's going to, they're not going to go across the street, walk out in the back road, they're going to just follow it up on the highway. I mean, the road section of, just, pretty likely.
Yeah, I can, yeah, they, the state's already, we've asked them to look at safety improvements out on Main Street. It's also a state route, so, yeah, I can get in touch with them and see if there's any, if they can enforce on Mary Grubbs as well.
Any other questions for Mr. Bogan? As always, Mr. Bogan, very much appreciated. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, there was a concern on social media about the Owens Park opening, and Mr. Bogan just touched on what was going on down at the park. We are at a point where we could potentially swing the gates open. It wouldn't be, it would be a soft opening, right? It wouldn't be the official opening, which I would expect to be more around the springtime. There are a few things currently, right now, we do have a pile of millings that would be a danger for the children if they're climbing. So Jerry, I know, had communicated with Matt Brown, Councilman Brown, about spreading the millings, and hopefully by the end of the week, next week, that would be accomplished. Also, we had a fencing company come out to make a barrier around the foundation, and there's a gap on one side, so that's not acceptable. They told me they would be out by the end of the week to look at that as well. And we also have an opening on the foundation side near the lake that needs to be closed prior to. So there was one other piece, and it was the path, and Mr. Bogan, you could probably speak to it better than I, but I guess the path ends, right, where it should be ADA compliant, but where the path ends, it could be a trip hazard, or?
Yeah, so, you know, as I said, when Rigler was installing the asphalt for the path, they did it, they do it in two levels. They got the first, the first layer down and ran out of good weather before they could do the top layer, so there's about an if separation between the top of the path and the walking bridge. So we just, unfortunately, put some caution around that, just to call attention to it, just to avoid anybody to trip on it, you know, assuming it was ADA compliant, and try to, you know, put a creature under it or anything like that, and then fall. So we've got it protected.
Thank you, sir. So we're close. We're real close, and we can't wait to open up the gates and allow the citizens access to your park. I would say, just with these few minor things, we're a couple weeks away. I know the weather's these few minor things, we're a couple of weeks away. I know the weather's not conducive for, um, you know, we're, we're in December, but although it was around fifty degrees today. So, hopefully, um, we can swing the gates open, and people can at least go see what's there. Um, but, again, the real opening, we would expect to be sometime in, in the spring. So, just an update there on the, the park. Does council have any questions or comments regarding the park? Amy, I'm going to switch to you. You had a question about, um, Venmo for the Games Center?
Right. Um, I wanted to bring it to council and see if y'all were okay with opening um, a Venmo or PayPal type account for, uh, the events. Um, because currently, the only way to buy a ticket to, like, the Games Tavern events is through City Hall, you, um, you know, go to the ladies. And a lot of people are not going to do that, so that isn't, uh, I see that as, as, but the ladies are awesome, and, oh, we should go in there because they are, they work really hard for you. But, um, it's easier to have something like that to purchase the tickets through. So, it doesn't have to be Venmo. I don't even have Venmo, but, um, something like that, or a Square, you know, when we're at the tavern, someone, like, or, you know, like, a certain person can have a way to take money, because cash, although it's wonderful, is hard to keep in your pocket apparently.
So, Rebecca did follow up with Ben, our accountant, and, um, Square might be an option. We need to explore this with them. At first sight, he, Rebecca took a little note, and it states, um, that it becomes an internal control issue, and that it potentially opens the city to all kinds of, of issues. So, um, one, I appreciate you exploring the opportunity, because we should be able to do something more than cash, but let's just keep the conversation alive with Ben, just to see if Square or another option's available. It was on the agenda, so I was sure if we go ahead and, and address it. Rebecca brought it there, Dan Martin, maybe, so.
Was the Christmas open house the last event of this season?
It is this season.
Okay, so we've got a few months to get it worked out before spring hits.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and so we, next is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero nine revised, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Walton, Kentucky, requiring all businesses operating in the city to apply for and obtain a business license from the city or its, or its designee, and requiring all employers to deduct and withhold from the compensation of its employees working in the city an occupational tax, and pay it to the city or its designee. Mr. Duncan?
Okay, thank you, mayor and council. There are a couple of things. Uh, we discovered that there already is an ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh nine. Um, so, the correct ordinance number is fifteen. Is that right, Rebecca?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yes.
Sixteen, okay. All right. And, um, per the discussion at the last meeting, uh, we discussed, uh, that this would be a, a two percent payroll, uh, tax. It's called an occupational license fee. It would be paid, uh, out of the, uh, compensation of the employees that work in the city. Uh, the intention was to get this up and running in January of twenty twenty-five. But, the discussion also was that we would like Boone County to collect this for us. Um, Councilmember Gaskell and I met with the Boone County folks. There's going to be a delay on that. Um, so, we don't know exactly when we can start collecting it. So, there are three places in the ordinance that I'm going to ask for an amendment on, where it said on and after the first day of January twenty twenty-five, there are three places for that. Uh, we're going to ask for an amendment, so that it would read on and after the date that all arrangements for collection and notifications to employers have been made after the first day of January twenty twenty-five. So, um, this will be the first time we've had a payroll tax here. People, uh, who work in the city, uh, do pay a Boone County payroll tax if they're in the Boone County part. There's a very little part of our city that's in, uh, Kenton County, not too many businesses over there. But, for the Boone County part of it, you, you won't pay a double tax. Uh, there's a, you, you'll pay a total of two, two percent, not two percent plus what you're already paying. So, that is the second reading, and, um, we'll need two, uh, motions to adopt this. One is to adopt the amendment that I just read, and then the second would be to adopt the ordinance as amended.
I make a motion to amend the payroll deduction amount, please. Because we do get the point eight percent, as long as we're above what the Boone County is taking, I motion to make this a one percent tax instead of a two percent tax. Actually, I wanted to do point nine percent, but they could really easily go one, up one. But, this two percent is a sticker shot, regardless of it, the point eight percent is already coming out. Um, and I think that we're not going to raise twenty million dollars with this, and so we should not, um, do this to our, to our workers that come here into our town to work. So, I think that one percent is good. Um, we also end with that. We also have other adjustments that are, that needs to be made, you know, regarding the water rates and things. So, there, we're that in conjunction of, uh, changing that. I think we can work it out, with grants and things. That was a lot of words. One percent, that's what I wanted to add.
So, your, your recommendation for your motion is to amend section one, ten point oh three, paragraph A one, to change two percent to one percent?
Yes, thank you.
I think that's the only place in there, but, um, I would take your motion to mean any place that it's two percent, your recommendation would be one percent.
As long as we have it higher than theirs, we get that part, unless I'm mistaken. As long as our tax rate, which we don't have at, at the moment, is higher than theirs, theirs comes to ours, to us, right?
We would get the one percent, and they would get whatever was left over. A- actually, if it's, if it's over point eight, uh, Boone County would not get any part of it.
That's what I'm saying. So, we're already paying point eight. I think point two percent over that is, when?
Give a second.
John, you have a comment on the?
Are, are we in discussion?
Not yet. Um, not yet. There been, um, no motion seconded.
Does that motion fail since there's no second?
Yes.
Okay. Can we open this up for a comment from the four?
Absolutely, yeah.
Mr. Wainwright?
Um, so, what does the two percent, I think that helps the room understand the magnitude. So, what does, you know, we, you know, we're going to get point eight, organic, like, and then what's the other ones? So, what's, what's the balance on annual basis for that?
Sure. Sherry did the due diligence with the county. It's right around two point eight million.
Per, per year?
Per year. It is.
And that was on the high side? Like they said, I didn't know they got low, medium, high, like, nobody really knows till it actually starts coming in.
We don't know for sure.
Um, and like, on the low side, you know, we're looking closer to, to.
And to, and to Mr. Duncan's point earlier, where he stated, the goal, right, was January one of twenty-five. It's not doable. When speaking with the county, they said they can't begin until June. So, um, what they shared with us is that this probably would not be implemented until January of twenty-six.
How does it impact the Tiff District? Or does it?
It'd be on top of the Tiff District, and whatever payroll tax there might be in Kenton County, I'm not sure what they have.
Have, have they had any input or were concerned?
Haven't heard any.
Mm-mm.
Maybe all.
No. And, and, of course, it was out there on social media. So, although it's written or proposed at two percent, the county currently is getting point eight of our tax dollars. So, it would be for those who work in Walton, a, a one point two percent increase in what they're seeing now. And there's been research, neighboring towns, neighboring cities, and what their taxes are that aligns. There are some that are more. Um, and, again, i- if you know us individually, personally, none of us are yay tax, right? And, and it impacts our city workers, who understand that. It, it impacts everyone at this table. But, when we're discussing how we're going to generate enough revenue for thirty million dollars for infrastructure upgrades that should have happened a decade ago, here we are, you know. So, it's, it's, I understand it's not favorable. Um, and, and my belief, it's, it's necessary.
So, uh, and again, yeah, I'm scared of the money, I thought anyone was in the room. Rose, mind if I? When we discussed it years ago, um, it's like ninety percent or more of the folks that would be impacted, don't, don't live in Walton.
Correct. That's correct.
We've got those numbers updated, and it's still in there.
Sewer lines, roads, all the things that come out of Walton. So, uh, those, some of us now work from home in Walton, um, may be impacted. I, I think the, I think the group needs to look at the totality of it, and though I understand you're concerning me about the percentage, things aren't getting cheaper. I mean, every time you wait, it's, it's gone up a mill or two, right? And so, I think it's smart to think about it, but also, you know, is there, is there a time when you, when you can slice it back? And, and that time could be when the Tiff District finally rolls in Walton, right?
That will need to be determined.
To pay that back, you know, twenty million dollars, or, or fifteen million dollars. So, once you get that money back in, right, you may look at maybe possibly lowering the occupational taxes, because then you'll have a, a new, uh, income stream that you want. Or, or maybe you can interest that in bonding, you know, remaining out, so we can take that credit now, or sooner, if possible. I don't know what their interest is with the passing of this, this, this.
Actually, actually, their money, instead of going to them, would go to the, the bondholders. We're, we're still not going to get, i- until the fifteen million or whatever it was gets paid off, either bonding or paid out, we're still not going to get any more money from the Tiff.
So, that extra occupational tax is going to be on top of the Tiff District, that is able to be separated and brought back to the city and doesn't go into that bucket?
Yes, that's correct.
That's where my mind was, or it didn't, way to certainly get that income.
You know, I think you highlighted the importance of this. Like the mayor said, nobody's in favor of extra taxes, but, right now, all of the taxes that fund the entire operation of the city are paid by the citizens and the property owners here in, in town. What this does is spreads the tax burden out, so that people that come in and take advantage of what you all have done for years, start paying part of their fair share.
Yeah, I, and another, just, and I'll be done, um, just perspective. They said it was going to be around six hundred and sixty thousand in bond payments per year.
Per year, yeah.
We only take in about eight hundred thousand upper taxes in Walton, per year. So, I hope that puts a bit of perspective, though, when you say, oh, we can, you know, we can twist, you know, raise a little bit here, raise a little bit. A little bit here is nothing, because our total is only eight hundred thousand, right? Obviously, there's other revenue streams, motor vehicles, uh, insurance taxes that, you know, there could be slight tweaking, but you're not getting, you're not getting almost a mill a year with tweaks, right, without the citizens of, you know, the majority of citizens feeling most of it. The way to generate a couple of million dollars a year, and, and sorry, non-residents of Walton is on, is on their back, right? And that's probably the position.
And to speak on Amy and John's point, um, me and Sherry had many discussions about, hey, well, maybe we should start at one percent. If we need more, you ask for it. But, it's better just to, in our opinion, rip.
Start higher.
Start higher. Get what you need. Get five years, ten years down the road, and then start.
To be determined.
Take it off, you know, it, because honestly, as you've mentioned over the years, the city's not a bank. We are not collecting funds, just collect funds. Um, but we have these two massive projects to handle, and this is the fairest way council has determined that we should collect those funds.
If I might say something?
Absolutely.
Um, one of the things that was important is that, you know, we are in a moratorium, which means that nobody can come in and build. Nobody can do this, you know, um, because we don't have the capacity to ta- to take care of them. And then, one of the gentlemen from KLC mentioned to me that if you want to know what it's like to go over your limit on your moratorium, go talk to Lexington. The EPA is fining them left and right, because they have gone over. Um, they're a lot of, a, um, percentage. So, it's kind of scary, too. I mean, we don't want this tax. We don't want taxes, but we want our system fixed.
And we have to. It's a necessity. You know, there's wants and there's needs, right? It's, this isn't about building the super pool for the community. This is about staying away from the EPA, staying away from the fines, lawsuits that will begin, um, because we can't necessarily keep promises to developers, right? So, it's, it should have happened prior to, and I applaud council for coming together and, and really trying to work hard and understand what our options are. And we're going to continue to, as Mr. Bogan said, turn the stone, look for funding. We're going to continue to look for grants, but we can't wait. You know, we've waited too long, and here we are. Our fines will be coming, so. So, it seems to me that we have an opportunity. Mr. Duncan said there's an option to motion to amend, as he stated, to remove that date. Um, and what was the second option?
To adopt the ordinance as amended.
So, both would have to occur to move forward.
Right.
I can make a motion to, uh, amend the ordinance to the dates that Mr. Duncan announced.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Barb Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown.
And the second piece would be to adopt as amended?
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt as amended.
I'll second that as well.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Barb Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown.
And moving on, we have resolution number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, a resolution of the city of Walton, Kentucky, approving and.
That's a resolution, that's an order.
Yeah, is it okay?
Approving and authorizing the city to assist in the Verona Farmers and Artisans Market to establish their location for seasonal monthly farmers and artisans market in the city. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, mayor and council. Uh, this follows discussions that we've had previously. Uh, it's very short. I'll just read the whole thing. Whereas the Verona Farmers and Artisans Market was established in twenty twenty-three, and since that time has operated a seasonal monthly farmers and artisans market at the Verona Vineyards, Vineyards. Whereas the Verona Farmers and Artisans Market would like to establish a more regional market, serving the larger Walton-Verona community, to be operated in the city of Walton. And whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Walton, Kentucky believe that it will be beneficial to the city and its citizens and surrounding community to allow the run of farmers and artisan market, to establish and operate its seasonal monthly farmers and artisans market in the city, and suggest the city complex as the, at the intersection of Main and Church Streets to be the location. Now, therefore, be it adopted, be it resolved, that the mayor and city council of the city of Walton, Kentucky do hereby approve and authorize the city to assist the Verona Farmers and Artisans Market to establish their location for its seasonal monthly farmers and artisans market in the city, and suggest that the location of the city complex at the intersection of Main and Church Streets. So, that's the entire resolution up to council. You can adopt that by motion.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Barb Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
And so, welcome to council comments, Amy?
Merry Christmas.
Ms. Rose?
Merry Christmas, my.
Barb?
Well, first, I'll say Merry Christmas to everybody here. Thanks for coming. Um, second, I want to say, it has just been wonderful working with this council and this mayor. It's nothing like I've experienced in the past.
John?
No offense, John.
What'd he say?
Hey.
No offense, John. Um, it's just been wonderful, and had I had a crystal ball, eh, maybe, but it's been great. And I'll still come to caucus and council and speak my mind, you know me.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sherry?
I just want to say Merry Christmas as well, and thanks to everybody that comes out, and thanks for your support, and thanks for your time, and we appreciate it. And we hope in a fair, really great twenty twenty-five.
Just want to thank council for all the work on the, the tax situation. Um, it's been incredibly stressful from our perspective, trying to justify it, make sure the numbers make sense, and I've had sleepless nights. I've met with our council, and I've met with a lot of these folks up here, and it's. met with a lot of these folks up here, and it's, it's, I cannot stress enough how seriously we have taken that issue. It should have been done years ago, um, but it is nice to check that box and, uh, and be able to move forward in a progressive way. So thank you to you folks, and thank you to the citizens for understanding the seriousness of the situation.
Thank you, and a few comments, um, just so much appreciation for Barb for serving. We appreciate you, and you'll be missed, but I know you'll be around, so that serves my heart well. A valuable asset to the city. Barb's done a lot of work, she's put in a lot of time, and she's served in this, this role, most recently, an appointment from around the June timeframe, but prior to that, Barb was also a councilperson for, to return? Yes, so you'll be missed, you are loved, but we'll see you here.
She'll be there.
She will.
I'll be sitting right there next to you.
Yeah, you two whisper, I know.
We'll have to separate them.
For council and myself, there is a form that needs to be filled out, acknowledgment of city property, so if you've not turned that in, please do if you have, thank you. Christmas on Main, just to reiterate, what a wonderful time for the community to come together, and, um, thank you so much to, again, the city workers, our volunteers, our businesses, um, the employees of the businesses that made it happen. It was, it was great. The parade participants, it was a great night, so hopefully you came, you enjoyed. And to Mr. Santangelo, who has documented the evening and shared from his perspective, and it's been wonderful, thank you, sir, much appreciation. I, I did want to ask Jerry and Matt, did we receive the speed hump? Did, did we take possession of that? We did. Okay, good. So we'll talk about where the next installation will be. Thank you. Um, also, Sunday at the Gaines House was the Christmas festivities, and I just want to give thanks to Amy, as well as Paula Jolly, who keeps the Gaines House moving. I know it is a prized possession of the city, and it's something that they're able to open the doors, and the historical value there is, is amazing. I'm just being straightforward, I've been there one time since we've had the Gaines House, and I felt like I was in colonial Virginia. So if you've not experienced that, get to the Gaines House, check it out. The ladies have done a fine job, so again, thank you, Amy. Uh, just a side note, we are going to be putting contract, contracted services out to bid. The two at top of mind that will be coming in the new year will be our landscaping, as well as our cleaning business. So, um, keep your eye out for that. If you're interested, if you know people who may be interested, share that information, but you'll find that on, uh, more information on the city website, and we'll share too on social media, so. It's been a great evening. Congratulations to our elected officials, and welcome aboard Caleb and, and January. Thank you all for being here, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, all. Grab a cookie on the way out, please, and thank you.
Right, he showed.